The median like turning around. We thought, okay, it'll be clear by the time we get there. It's an hour away. So we did there and it's just. It's so slow. And as we got to the pass. The snowplow was still stuck. So he wasn't really clearing anything. He was stuck.
And when a snowplow is stuck, that's not good.
Well, is that the only way in? Or is there a longer way around?
Oh, I didn't even know how to.
Get there without the pass?
Fun story.
How you doing, Jay?
Doing well. This thing has been weird. Yeah, I don't think I even downloaded anything. Doesn't matter. I put soft lines. I use it on the line. No wifi. The girls will tell you. Everything I touch is possessed. I have more troubles with on base than. The rest of the city provide probably. I'm always like, okay, it's not working. What do I do now? All right, it is four thirty. We will welcome and call to order the study session. Meeting of West Valley City Council. It is January ninth, twenty twenty four. We're beginning at four thirty P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the. Council present right now except Councilman Hune. So we have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, Councilman. Bitsy Ammanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon. Myself. We're joined at the table with. Our interim assistant city manager. Mister Flores and our city recorder, Miss Kamic. We'll begin with the uh meeting minutes of January second, twenty twenty four. Turn it to the council for comment or a motion.
To approve the minutes from January second, twenty twenty.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, those stand approved. Our first item of business is in our communications. We'll have a strategic plan presentation. From Mister Bunderson.
Uh before Eric gets started, I just wanted to mention.
Oh, wait. Yeah, I just totally went all over tonight's meeting. Sorry, Eric. Yeah, we did. Let's skip this totally. I went right to Eric. So regular meeting tonight. Do you have any changes on the agenda? No, no. Did anybody have any questions on tonight's agenda? Nope.
No questions.
Okay. Mister Flores, did you have something before we move on to communications?
Eric, you can come up. I just wanted to mention um. That once we complete all these presentations, we will compile all the information and and provide that to you in one document. So. We just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Not feel like you gotta track it all. It's giving two jobs.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is the new workout program?
Yeah, I got my steps. Yeah. Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Bunderson. I am the um director of the Office. Of Justice and Technology, as I like to call it, and no one else does. Um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it work. So um the the. The council last week asked for a couple of things um for our budget priorities, five-year plan. And then um some future sort of departmental changes. So I'm gonna go over those things. Just real quickly, um for the Office of Justice and Technology, as you know, includes the I T department and the legal department. Um. Our big concern and our big budget concern um is cybersecurity. And to address cybersecurity, the three areas uh that we want to focus on are software, personnel. And hardware. Um in this uh written document uh that Mister Flores discussed. I'll I'll include the full list of our our budget modifications, but essentially what we are um what we're concerned about is. Upgrading and paying for our current software, which. Under the the current model, most software is licensed. And then you you pay the licensing every year and inflation just keeps uh driving that up. Um that's everything from Microsoft Word, C works, everything that basically runs our city. Um second, uh. We are asking, or it would be nice to have one more person helping with network um security. Uh we call them. Sys admins um and it. We have about twenty-eight off-site locations from the Maverick Center to the fire stations and everything else. So. Got a lot of uh hardware and software uh throughout. And keeping that safe and secure requires someone often to go around and um we're pretty short in that area. And finally, hardware, the obviously the backbone of our network. Um we have some old equipment. That uh we would like to see replaced and we what we're proposing is a plan to replace those on a. Perpetual basis, like replace a certain server every five years, replace um computers every four years. That way we stay. Up with the current technology and don't get behind. There are some. Um there are sometimes where like an old computer can get so far behind that. It's not updating and the security is not updating on that. And so if we if we stay ahead of all this. Stuff and kind of stay on top of it, that. That boils down to um network and cybersecurity for the city and and protects our data. So. On the risk management side, which is under the under the legal department, um one of the one of the things that. We're asking for is uh. Police. Cameras uh in every car, uh traffic cameras essentially uh. And what we've seen in the small test run that we've done is that we're able to sort of catch the bad drivers. As they uh as they accelerate too hard, run stop signs, look at their phones while they're driving. Um. The the system that we've got in in this pilot program um is able to catch all that. Supervisors review it. And are able to sort of um sort of put a a stop to bad behavior, especially in new officers. And so. Ma'am?
So is this to? Police the police or for the police to use as evidence when giving a ticket?
You know, it would work both ways. Their body cams work perfectly fine for evidence and giving the ticket. Um and that's a great system. This would be more like. Reducing the number of accidents that are our fault.
Okay.
Um that is my most frequent risk claim is at-fault police accidents. It's not my most expensive, but in in sheer numbers. Um claims against the police vehicle accidents are my are my highest. So. That's sort of the current. Yes, sir.
How many do we have a year on average?
Um, I would say. Probably. Probably seven a month, seven to ten a month. Not always our fault. But um at at fall, I would probably say we might have three or four a month. Yeah. Maybe a little less than that now that I think about it, but. Somewhere around that, somewhere around that area. We review all of them. And the reason we I I became aware of this camera system is. As a corrective action, not particularly a punishment, but as a corrective action, we put this camera system in um in somebody who's been in an accident's uh car. And we're able to follow them for two weeks and see what they do. And again, when they're taking their eyes off the road, when they're heart breaking, when their heart accelerating. Uh when their lights aren't on and and things like that. So. It's a it's a pretty interesting thing. Um I don't have like a full data set to prove it will reduce our numbers. I'll just be candid with the council. But um it does seem to be, it does seem to be um. Helpful for the supervisors. Have to speed up because that was five minutes. So looking five years into the. Okay, thank you. Looking five years into the future for the second question. The the cybersecurity obviously remains a a concern if these ongoing. Um things that we I talked about. A second ago. Um are if we're able to put those into place continually continually updating servers and software and stuff like that, the cyber. The cybersecurity thing, I think we'll we'll be able to manage that. So the so the second five-year concern for our department is personnel. Um we're at a real trough right now in terms of um recruitment and retention. I've got lawyers. Leaving left and right. Now, this doesn't particularly concern me because if you take a long view, um when the economy is really good. You lose all your people to, not all your people, but you lose people to. Private industry. And then when the economy gets a little worse, the government jobs become um. More attractive uh the benefits and the and the stability of the government jobs come more um. Uh attractive and and we're able to retain and get good people. And so I just I just am gonna watch that. For the next couple of years and just keep an eye on on how that goes. Um. Like I said, we're we're at a real depressing trough right now where I've lost. You know, a a couple attorneys who got double the salary they were getting here. And the salary that we were paying here was very. Very good. Um and but that's just the way it goes. And um so. I'm not asking for anything there, but just saying as a five-year outlook, that is a concern. Finally. Um sort of deep into the future. Um uh. To quote The Simpsons, I would say that uh. I for one, welcome our new A I overlords and. I I actually asked a uh one of the artificial intelligence programs to create a little handout for me and some. Give me some ideas for a name of this presentation and it created this very weird mural. And it gave me the name gavels to gigabytes uh for this presentation. So. Looking looking farther into the future, it's interesting because the the you know, the law probably changes the slowest of anything where I T. Probably changes the fastest of everything, but but this sort of A I revolution that we're having right now is crashing both of them together to the point where. You know, what used to be hours of research uh into a legal subject, um the the. The chat G P T version of our legal research software can pull up a paragraph with citations. A- almost in thirty or forty seconds. Um. And in addition to all the other stuff that you see with the automation of stuff, the data analysis and everything else. So so. Looking looking into the future, I I what I would say is that. Our department's goal is to remain very agile. Um we can't predict what's going to happen, but we are we are trying all of the different things that come out. We're. We're experimenting with them. We're doing little pilot programs with this and that. And that's what we would want to keep doing over the next few years is. Is just see where automation and artificial intelligence um can take us and what efficiencies it can bring. Um. It it may end up being, you know, uh. Two lawyers and a subscription to a artificial intelligence legal. Program um to do that, or or you know, like algorithms that are able to uh to give o- offers based on what we. Put in in the in the prosecution department and things like that. I mean, we'll always need people. But uh I don't know what roles they'll be in in the future. And so um we're just. Again, keeping an eye on that, experimenting with what we can and um. And we wish to continue to do that. And that's all I've got. Counselors and questions or input you want me to do further research on for the paper?
Anything for the council?
Yeah, um so uh. You guys doing very much uh. Most cases you do it in-house. Uh Eric?
So so my prosecutors prosecute all. Criminal. Matters that are not felonies in the city.
Okay.
Um. My civil division does not do a ton of in-house work. We through Irma, if we get sued civilly. Uh we hire um outside people to do the litigation. We do all the contracts, all the um. You know, day-to-day advice to all these guys back here, um all the all all that kind of stuff in-house. So. So the only thing we I guess the only thing we don't do in-house is actual civil litigation.
So you think go that way, gonna be? More inexpensive way to do instead of get more attorney to do.
You know, we yeah, we've dialed it in uh over the last couple of years uh to the point where we have some really good attorneys. Who charge us really good rates. And I don't know if I could duplicate that in-house. I really don't. Um to get a good to get a good attorney for kind of the salary range that we have. I I don't think I don't think I could do it. I think we're I think it's better the way we're doing it right now.
Like good or not?
Hmm. Yeah.
Well, it gives us a more diverse pool to pull from. For each case, you can pull from here instead of.
Yeah.
Having all those specialties.
Right, because you know. For this city, I would probably have to hire a civil rights. Person, a negligence person, that's all the the car accidents, stuff like that, an employment person, and those aren't quite the same and. But uh yeah, so it's it's. I I think this I I would I would raise a stink with the city manager and the council if I didn't think this was the best system that we have. I really would. I think it's the most efficient.
On the cameras, the police cameras, can those also be used as um? Yeah, I guess protection if there's a claim and it's even well, no, they actually did.
Yeah.
This actually could help.
Yeah.
Protect the city.
Right. It would. It would be redundant to the body cams that our guys already wear, but yeah.
Are those on? Hundred percent they're they're when they act.
When when they have an incident, they act, they're trained to activate them and they do a really good job at that. And those and those uh body cams, actually, they'll go back thirty seconds. So they have a thirty-second buffer. So sometimes you'll see a video and the and the officer will tap the button. But you've already seen thirty seconds of the video because it's it actually records backwards. It doesn't record backwards, but it puffers for thirty seconds. So yeah.
Does the is the car camera?
It's always on. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it like my car camera that faces out and catches the person in front of me, but it faces in and catches the people inside as well?
Yeah, I've got a, oh, I don't, I didn't.
Dash cam type?
Yeah, it's like a dash cam, but it it points backwards. Um I I had a video, but I I uh. I didn't boot it up because I didn't think I'd have enough time. So I can forward that video to you. It's kind of fun.
I think just on the data and cybersecurity, that's. Um an area where you don't want to be shorted and I I can support putting more resources toward that. Just. It's like buying part tires. It's not fun, but you need it.
Right. Okay, other comments. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to Mister Johnson for City Communications.
Just getting ready.
I was just hoping we could have from that little demonstration, a hologram that just showed up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Sam Johnson, Director of Communications. Um today I'm going to be talking about uh the two. Main things under my uh managership, which is City Communications and the Justice Court. So I did a little what Eric did. I asked A I to come together and put together a. Picture for you all where I said. Please put a photo of P R professionals working super hard with a courtroom as the background on a television. And that is what we got. You can tell the people are beautiful, just like my office, all the employees. Um we don't have that many employees, but we work as hard as. Uh the number of people that you see on that screen. So uh it's a lot of fun to play with A I and there's a lot of great things and I'll be talking about it in just a minute as well. So for the City Communication Division. Um we have a couple of budget needs. And as you know, my office, we handle the youth city council. And some of the things that we do throughout the year for them is we have the day of the legislature, which I think all of you are familiar with, which is next week. Um we have activities throughout the year. They meet typically, they meet every other week, but sometimes it's even more often. Um our advisor is Clover Meeters. And if you know Clover, she was the former. Uh Planning Commission Chair. Um and she is doing this on a um volunteer basis right now, which is wonderful of Clover. Uh I also see a time where that changes whether uh she's able to continue to do it and we need more support. But the five thousand would go through uh for various activities. That is an ongoing request. That would be something that we would want to have every year that we could draw from. For our uh youth city council, which we have right now. We have it fluctuates between eight and ten members. Um and we're making more efforts to try to increase those numbers as well. Um photo shelter, a couple, about a year ago, two years ago, working with Mister Pyle, we came up with a solution where we could store. All of the photos that we have collected over the years. As all of you know. Um Kevin Condi was a big input into those numbers. Um. I think it's fair to say we probably have several million photos that Kevin took. He wore out his cameras over the years. Um we're slowly adding these to this database, which is photo shelter where our public. As well as any employee and all of us can access these photos. We're tagging them. We're doing different things to make it easier to find. Um if you're not familiar with that site, I can send you a link as well so that you can see some of the photos that we've uploaded. We continue to do so. But we're hitting a point in twenty twenty-five where we will have a need to renew the contract. Um talking with um John Evans and and John Flores. I put in here a twenty-one thousand dollar charge. That would be for three years of photo shelter. We're discussing different ways that we could make this. Maybe this is an ongoing request. Where we get the seven to eight thousand dollars a year to store it. Um we're not sure. But that's why I have it for twenty twenty-five. We're good until the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty-six for that demand, for that request. I think the biggest thing for our department is social media and reaching the public is always changing. And so we're trying to adapt and. Make sure that we're doing the latest and greatest and learning the latest and greatest so that we can reach our residents effectively. Um there's so many different platforms out there, so we're being a little picky in what we do. There's everything from TikTok to Instagram to Facebook and. Everything in between. We do see A Is also stepping in in different ways. So we're trying to stay on top of it so that. We can provide the best service to our residents. I think that's gonna be the biggest challenge for our department is making sure we stay. Relevant so that our residents get all the information that they need. Um are there any questions on any of that so far? Yes, Mayor?
So I was talking to somebody the other day and I cannot remember who, but they were saying that it was either. TikTok or Twitter, one of them was really good in an emergency situation. They don't go to Facebook or Instagram for emergency. So do you know which one of that?
It's probably Twitter. So how we use Twitter as a city is when we have a police incident or a fire incident. We have a lot of people that start calling. We get ten, twenty, thirty calls all in a half hour. What we have kind of trained our media is when there is a big incident, you need to go to our Twitter page and we will update it. So we did that for a couple of reasons. Number one, to. Stop the call so that they can get the information because they just want certain information that we can provide there. But we also want to have it as a resource for our residents because. We don't like the idea that our residents find out something later that happened. So if we're reporting. Through Twitter, through a social media platform, that something's happening, our residents are aware of it. While it's happening in the same time that the media is informed. So we use that. So if you'll. If we ever have some kind, and I'll take a police incident, all of the updates go there so that the media has the information. We also tell them where we are, that we'll be doing press conferences, all of that. So it's a kind of a one-stop for media to be able to get all the information that they need as well as our residents.
So how do we make sure we know to go to Twitter? I never go to that. I mean. I told you a long time ago, I only follow one person. So. On Twitter, you'd have to sign up for the West Valley City. Every month?
Uh we do both. We suggest both, but police is typically what they want to follow, but we have a tw- uh police, a fire and a city page. Yes, Eric. Five minutes now? Okay, sorry. I thought he was asking a question to me. I'm like, this is odd. What can I do for you, Eric? Um so it's hard because if you use social media like Facebook and Instagram for emergency situations, it gets buried. And so we do still.
Show up for three days.
Yes, exactly. So we do put the information out on those platforms that as well, but when it's a when it's an emergency and a priority, it goes on Twitter. So that people have easy access to that. And and Mayor, I can send you a link to um our Twitter pages. And for any of you, if you're not familiar on how to use Twitter, uh we can do little workshops or whatever. I can meet you on Tuesdays or whatever days that you want and. Show you how to access it so that you can follow along as well if you're not following us on Twitter.
So do we have anything on our webpage that says? If there's an emergency, follow us on Twitter? Because I only follow you on Facebook.
We do have our social media, all the social media on our Facebook, I mean, on our city website. Um I don't know if we've broken it down to what, because we also use Twitter for other things, not just emergencies. For the most part, um. We will also use other means if it's a big priority. If it's an emergency one, we have reverse nine-one-one, we have. Um email notifications that go out and we can also text through emergency management systems. So there are different ways that we can reach the entire public. Most of the things that are emergencies that I say are typically a police shooting, a large fire, a water break, those kinds of things. Which we will update our Facebook page in real time as well. So if people just go directly to our page, they'll be able to get all that. It's just Twitter has proven a way, uh especially for media that they appreciate. And we do have a fair amount of followers on there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh but like I said, please reach out to me if any of the social media that you need help on or have questions on, I'm happy to work with you on that. Um in terms of the Justice Court, Justice Court, we have a couple of things that we are looking at. So. I started taking this over uh when Nicole left. This was under Nicole Pottles. Um and so I started doing it and then uh both John Evans and. John Flores asked me to continue. Some of the needs that they have is right now the workload is fairly high for our clerks. Um. Being uh totally upfront, it's not at a breaking level right now. And so even though I do have it as a need, there is a need. It's something that. We do have some time on that as well, but we are hitting a point where there will be a need for a new clerk. Um training, one of the things that they are missing is they do not um have a budgetary item for training purposes for their clerks. And so this is ongoing training that would be available to them. It's a program modification. That I have coming in for this coming year where that five thousand would be ongoing and they'd be able to draw to that to be able to attend. Clerk conferences and other things having to do with the Justice Court. We feel five thousand dollars would do it. The technology, this is in the future. Um. They are gonna need new computers. We're working with I T on the best way that we can meet this demand instead of buying. Twenty-five, thirty computers every three or four years. We would like to spread that out and be able to to have it make more sense for this group. Um I do have it as a budget item for a one-time purchase in twenty-five, twenty-six. But like I said, I'm working with I T to see if we can change how that is paid out and how, whether it's the leasing option that's happened in the past or buying it outright. Over four years instead of all in one year. Um the biggest try change that could happen with the justice courts, and you've heard it discussed, I think Eric's brought it up several times. The state legislature is currently considering justice court reforms. We don't know when that's gonna happen. It's probably gonna happen, but we don't know what that means either. So if you read the sentences that I. Have here, it's very um, it means nothing. I'm saying it could cost us more, it could stay the same, or it could cost us less. That's how um that's kind of where we stand right now. Um. Hopefully, this legislature will get a little more idea of where it's headed and so that we can be a little stronger wording on. That final uh those final sentences, but that's where we're at. We just don't know where what it's gonna look like in three or four years. So just wanted you to have a heads up that. We're monitoring closely. Uh Mister Bunderson is part of those that are um working with the legislature on that and our. Court's administrator is uh Stephen Calvert. He also attends and stays in touch with us to discuss it further as well. So that is all I have unless there are any further questions.
Sam, do all of our justice court reforms have to be? Um. Used to be aided by the state legislature. I I know that we've had some. Things that we've done to improve. Didn't come from the state legislature.
I I. I know that we continue to find different ways. And when we moved over to this new system, Stephen Calvert is our court administrator. He has some great experience working in the court system. He was with Salt Lake County for years. So we're continuing to find ways that we can efficiency uses to be able to cut costs and be able to do that. These bigger reforms are going to come from the state legislature, the bigger ones that they're discussing right now. That could go any which way. I saw another hand.
I was just curious what the current budget is for the U City Council.
It is on, if you look line by line, it is zero. So what, what I've done with my, with this over the years since we brought it back, we brought it back. When I started here, I hit my 10-year mark, which was very exciting for me. There was no U City Council. It had gone extinct. And so I brought it back, I believe in 2015. And so I never had a budget and I tried to make do for a while and then Mr. Pyle every year was able to get me some money for things that I needed. Right now I'd like to take another step forward and make our U City Council feel like they're a priority for our city. And I think with 5,000, I think that gives us definitely enough money to have them have appropriate attire that signifies that we're West Valley City, but also be able to attend different workshops and meetings and kind of get them the recognition that they deserve. So.
So does this mean they did not get new shirts and jackets for the opening day of the-
They will have jackets. They did get shirts for this past year. The shirts are very good shirts for summer and spring and fall activities. I don't think they're appropriate for up at the legislature, but they'll have jackets.
So on the justice court reform, are you talking just minor legislative, how to run it, or are they still considering shutting down all the city's justice courts?
All of it's on the table.
Everything's-
Yeah, so they could bring, they could bring a lot of the work that's being done here and bring it all under one house downtown. Or they could leave it with us and increase some of those things. So it's all of that and they're just trying to figure it out.
Okay.
Keeps us all on our toes.
Well, and after that big investment on the courts and then to have them say, never mind, we're going to pull it back into the county. You guys don't need to do that on your own.
Well, PR will have a nice new office over there. Maybe not. No, we will not.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah. To follow up the question is that when are they going to make that decision?
We, we don't know. That I've heard everything from the next couple, next two to three years to something that it won't go into effect for five or six or seven years when they do decide. There are some requirements that, and maybe Mr. Bunderson can give me some clarification or can add to it, but they can't really do anything. All of the judges that are in place right now, they cannot be removed until their limits, their, their their terms are up. So, and I don't think that's until 2026, 2028. So nothing before then can happen, but after that it could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, well now move on to the reconstruction of Lancer Way. Turn the time to Mr. Wilson and Mr. Ray.
Right. Good afternoon. There we go. Maybe. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sorry about that. Unfortunately, you're not going to be able to hear from Mr. Ray today. He had a, got sick over the holidays and he has this lingering cough that he can't seem to kick. And so we're going to spare you guys and, and keep him, keep him away, but we look forward to the opportunity in the future where you can meet him. Jeff's been with us for a little over three years now. He's our design manager. We got to know Jeff when he was working on Mountain View Corridor as a consultant. He has over 20 years of experience and he's a great, great designer and a great, great manager. And he's been the main project manager on this Lancer Way project. So maybe in our next go around, we'll, we'll get him down here and, and get you guys, get his face in front of you guys a little bit. But the purpose of our presentation today, our presentation is basically just kind of a recap of where we are with Lancer Way. We were requested to kind of come and give you guys an update of where things are at. We had our public meeting in August. Typically, we hold those public meetings when we're right around the 60% design phase. That's when we have kind of all the geometry figured out. Kind of the typical section of the roadway, which you can see on the screen here. And then from 60 to 90%, that's when we get into all the nitty gritty details of a lot of the subsurface stuff, property tie-ins, drainage stuff, things that don't necessarily change a whole lot of the big picture view of what the project is. So a lot of, of what you're likely interested in are the same things that were, were discussed and shown in that public meeting back in August. And I know we saw a few of you there. In fact, I think the mayor is the one that enlightened us of to Councilman Christiansen's Spanish speaking ability and we, we utilized that that evening to help us with some, some translation that night. So we appreciate the help there. See, multipurpose meeting that night. So, but anyways, I'll just give you a quick recap of kind of the scope of our project on Lancer Way. Lancer Way is a full-depth reconstruction project from 2,700 West to 3,200 West. Full depth reconstruct is obviously much more than a mill and fill. We are removing the pavement. We're removing the road base. Excavating down full depth to replace the subgrade, the road base and the roadway. So it's a pretty impactful project. It's similar to what you've seen on 4,100 South and 4,700 South over the years. Fairly extensive project. Our roadway out there right now has several drainage issues. We don't have curb and gutter in a lot of the areas. There's not anywhere for the stormwater to go. So when we get this project complete, as you can see on this typical section here, we will have a full width roadway, our standard 66-foot right-of-way, which will have one lane in each direction. We'll have a center turn lane so that residents can get out of the travel lanes when they're waiting to turn into their driveway. We'll have bike lanes out there and then we'll have the addition of our park strip sidewalk and street trees as well. And then of course, we'll need to address our, our drainage issue that we have out there also. This is just kind of, again, these are just some of those exhibits. I believe in your packet, we just sent you the link to the project website. So you can go to that anytime. Once construction starts, it will be construction updates on that website. So that's a good place for you to go to, to continue to get project updates. These are just some of the things that we talked about. I failed to mention street lighting. We will get street lighting out there with our project. I think the rest of these items, we mentioned with the exception of the buried power lines, Rocky Mountain Power, we will be burying the Rocky Mountain Power lines out there, which will be a good improvement to the corridor. One thing I do want to hit on is the drainage. I said, not a lot has changed since that 60% design. That would be with the exception of drainage. So we do have a drainage issue out there to where all the neighborhoods south of Lancer Way, they all kind of drain and grade slowly towards Lancer Way. And there's nowhere for that water to go and it ponds up and it puddles in those areas. So we always knew that we would need to address drainage, but how to get the drainage and convey it to where it needed to be was always going to be a little bit challenging because we have to get it north somehow because 2,700 West doesn't have a lot of capacity in that system as well. So in looking at different options, and, and Jeff had a much better KMZ file that he was going to share, but I'm just going to have to share these, these exhibits here. But, but we identified basically a corridor if we basically up through the Edwood condominium project through their parking lot, we can get a storm drain trunk line north at that location. Eventually that stormwater gets to 3,500 South into a UDOT system that eventually makes its way to Decker Lake. But the problem that we have is the UDOT system in 3,500 South, it doesn't have capacity to take all of our water at once. That's a lot of water. So we have to find a place where we can detain that water and release it at a, at a certain rate into the UDOT system. So in order to accomplish that, we're going to have to have two basically underground detention facilities. We can't get the, the grading to all work to isolate it into one just because the slope from, on Lancer Way slopes from the west to the east. So we're going to pick up what we can and take it up north through the, that parking lot. And then the rest of it will go into our existing system, which goes through the old credit union parking lot basically, and then, and then up Market Street. So those are the two routes that we have to get to north. But we have to detain that water in both locations. So we've worked with the Parks Department to identify the location of one of those underground detention systems and that will be basically in the Fairborn Station, the Promenade Park over there. So there will be impact to that park during construction. We will have to excavate there and install the underground detention basin, the facility there. And then restore that landscaping on the top. So when we get done, you shouldn't notice much of a difference, but it's, it's going to be torn up and then, and then fixed. That's the, that's the first location. The other location will actually just be in the parking lot of the credit union parking lot that we, that we acquired a few years back. This line work here shows some of the, when UTA comes in to make the improvements to the bus hub there, this will be their new footprint. And then in that area over there underneath the parking lot, we will have underground detention there as well. So those are the two big items that have changed since we, we met at our public meeting in, in August. But it's, it's an area in our storm drain system that we knew was flawed. We knew we had to find a spot to take the stormwater. So we're not, we're not caught off guard by the fact that we have to make improvements. It was just identifying the proper improvements to be made. So, so those will be incorporated with, with the project. As far as where we stand right now, we have, oh, wrong way here. Let's go back to here. We have the right-of-way acquisition phase right now is always kind of the schedule killer of all projects, just dealing with that many different property owners. We have 32 different parcels that we're acquiring right-of-way or easements from along Lancer Way. Today, we have cleared 18 of those parcels, so we're still working on 14 of those. As we know, right-of-way sometimes can, can go well more than, more likely than not. We'll have a few challenging ones that will take us a little bit longer to, to acquire. And with the federal money involved with this project, we cannot advertise the project until all of the right-of-ways cleared. So that's not, that's not a possibility. So right-of-way will be our big schedule driver here as to, to when, when this project will be built. The two options that we're looking at right now, if things went really well and we can clear right-of-way in the next two months, then we could advertise the project and get the project started this year. Going through the UDOT advertisement process that still takes time, so they likely would not be able to finish the project this year. There would have to be a winter suspension and then come back next year. If we get too late into the season, it likely makes more sense to advertise with what they call a flexible start date. So we give the contractor basically a window of when he could start. That could be as early as this fall, potentially, you know, late winter next year. He kind of gets to choose. The contractor gets to choose when they start basically, but the construction would be in 2025. It would be required to be complete in 2025. So we'll look at those options as we get closer with clearing right-of-way as to what's going to be best and hopefully get the most competitive bid pricing when we, when we advertise the project. As mentioned earlier, this is a, it's an impactful project with full depth reconstruction. When it's under construction, Lancer Way will be down to one, one lane. You can't maintain one lane each direction when we're doing full depth reconstruction. So we're going to maintain the westbound direction. So you can always travel from 27th to 32. The eastbound though, there will be, you'll have to go up to 35th or, or take a different detour. So so plan on that. It will be, it will be impactful once we actually start, start construction. So that's kind of scope and schedule. The only other item typically is budget on a project. And just a reminder on budget with this one, we applied for federal money, STP money, surface transportation money through WFRC. We have about $6 million of STP money. We also have about $2 million of state TTF money in this project. So we have about $8 million. The latest estimate on this project is right around $11 million. And a lot of that, the city will have to come up with that $3 million. A lot of that will be paid for out of stormwater utility, the drainage systems that we're talking about. That's accounting for about $2 million of those expenses. So the stormwater utility will be, will be the funding source for, for the majority of that gap with transportation sales tax meeting up the, closing the rest of that gap. So that's where we're at right now as far as budget and scope and schedule, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Noticing process or negotiation for easements and that. Have there been any oppositions or any concerns that residents?
No, they're all typically excited for the improvements. It's usually agreeing to compensation and how much they should be paid for their tree or their landscaping or their, so a lot of back and forth negotiations, like negotiations like that, but no one has objected to the project. We've had a lot of positive feedback. I, I can't say that we've had any negative feedback about the project.
If, if you pause during the winter, 24, 25, will it still be one way?
No, if we, if we advertise like that, then the contractor will basically be told that during that winter shutdown, he'll have to remove his traffic control and get one lane each direction. So yep. And actually it's coming to me that we, the one negative feedback that we have received would be on-street parking because obviously that will not be allowed anymore. We only heard that from one person so far, but it is a concern. It's a property closer to 3,200 West that currently needs, has several vehicles sold. The on-street parking was one concern that was, that was raised, but that's the only major concern I can think of that's been brought to our attention.
With the track station and the library, is there any pedestrian crossings over Lancer Way other than 47th and 32?
Yeah, so we have a mid-block crossing. You can see right here basically, so close to the bus hub, there is a mid-block crossing. It will be a striped crosswalk to get pedestrians north and south there.
So is that the crossing that the gentleman with the flyer came to the meeting with, or was that further west to get across for a bus stop?
I think that gentleman had requested two crossings. And I think this falls in spot, in the place where he was recommending the one. He was recommending an additional crossing further west, which has not been included in the project at this time. Mid-block crossings are kind of challenging when they're not at intersections, they're not super safe. So we don't love them, but sometimes there's a need. Our thought is probably to get these improvements built with sidewalk, sidewalk along both sides of the road, including the south side and see how well this sidewalk crosswalk gets utilized. And then if we have a lot of pedestrians going across, then we might have to visit it at that point in time.
Okay, so it'll be easily added in?
Definitely something we can just do in-house at that point in time.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I'm pretty sure when the final comes out, he'll ask why.
More than likely.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, man. Can you stick around up to this? Because I have a question for you with all the things, you know, and I wonder, like, I have found the council.
Yep, be happy to.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well now go to Mr. Pastrick for trends affecting land use.
Thank you, Mayor. So several weeks ago, we had kind of an opening conversation about, or an update, I should say, about our general plan. And we've got two presentations on the agenda for this evening. The first is talking about what I'm calling trends that affect land use. And then we'll look specifically at Redwood Roads. And we, we spoke big picture a few weeks ago. The council wanted to get kind of into more of the details so that the second presentation is more about that. But first, before we look at specific properties, I thought it'd be helpful to consider some of the factors that we're seeing that we think will impact land use. And that will already are in some ways, but will continue to impact land use. So these, these are the items and I'll talk about each one of these individually. So first of all, within Salt Lake County, and this data comes from the KMSGardner Policy Institute. So they're part of the University of Utah and they're the ones that basically provide state and county level population and employment projections. So you can see here, they're showing between 2020 and 2060, about one and a half million new jobs in Salt Lake County. So we're, we're going to continue to see growth in the county. So we're, we're going to continue to see growth in the county is the point of this slide. And then, of course, along with that growth, part of what attracts people to the state is the fact that we have so many jobs. And so that our population will also grow by about a half million folks by twenty sixty in Salt Lake County. So again, we're, we've seen a lot of growth. In fact, you may have seen that Utah over the last ten years was the fastest growing state in the country. And so we'll, we'll continue to see growth in the, over the next several decades. Now, this slide, I think, is pretty telling about how demographics have changed in the recent past. So the top table here shows some numbers for Salt Lake County and then how we compare with. See if I can get the Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Let me try this again here.
AI taking
So Okay. So the, the, again, the, the table for Salt Lake County shows the first of all, that first line, the average household size. So over the last twenty years, the household size has been shrinking in the county for both owner occupied as far as renter occupied units. When you look at also just households with children, that percentage has been shrinking over the last twenty plus years. But then on the opposite end, households with seniors are increasing, okay? And then finally, just the median age has been creeping up in the county. So then when you look at West Valley City, it's interesting here is our household sizes have actually inched up a little bit, which is again interesting. So we're bucking that trend in the county, okay? And I think part of that has to do with, as you can see, the households with children. While the households with children is, the percentage is decreasing, we're quite a bit higher than the county. So we have younger families or more younger families than the county does overall. For the city, we have roughly about the same percentage of houses with seniors, and it's, it's tracking with the county. And finally, our age is is trending up, but again, lower than the county. So hopefully that helps illustrate, in some ways, we're tracking with the county and other ways, we're actually seeing some differences. But I won't, I'll try not to spend too much time on this one. But if you're familiar with population pyramids, it it tries to reflect how many people fall within each age cohort. And so you can see in twenty twenty, it's more like a pyramid. But as you move to twenty forty and twenty sixty, it becomes more like a column. So you, again, you have more seniors and fewer young people in terms of, you know, percentage wise. Now, there's a lot to take in here. I'll try to distill this. So the, the graph on the top is showing building permits, single residential building permits in Salt Lake County. And then the graph at the bottom is showing permits within West Valley City. The blue line is permits for single-family detached homes. And the orange is everything else. So that's condos, townhomes, apartments. And so in the the nineties up till about the Great Recession, in both the county and the city, we were issuing more permits for single-family detached. From pretty much the point of the Great Recession forward, you know, those, there's multifamily units were either neck and neck with single-family. But then more recently, especially in the county, the multifamily units have have actually far outpaced single-family construction. Now, in the city, it's been kind of an up, up and down, where we'll have spikes, where you'll get a big project built in one year. And then you go back to about the same. But I think it's, again, looking at the county, the trend's pretty clear that, and we don't see this letting up, that there's more townhomes, condos and apartments being built per unit, like in terms of unit for unit than single-family detached. All right, so these next few slides candidly are pretty sobering, but the, this has to do with pricing. So this is for the state, okay? So back in two thousand, the average house was about three times what the median income was, okay? If you look at towards the end of twenty twenty two, that was, the average house was over six times the median income, okay? So that, that would put the the typical mortgage for, again, for the average house in Utah, the mortgage, again, this would have been as of the second quarter of twenty twenty three. And rates have come down a little bit, but not a lot. Your mortgage payment would be thirty seven fifty. And the income needed to, to afford that house would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, in West Valley, our house prices tend to be, on average, lower than the the state average. But you've probably seen in the news, there's, you know, the mayor has this push for starter housing, and the legislature is talking a lot about housing. So certainly, I, I think there's going to be a lot more discussion about how to do more affordable housing in the state. So two more slides and we'll get to Redwood Road. So this one is showing e-commerce. So what percentage of all retail transactions were done online versus, versus actual brick and mortar? Okay, so in, in twenty fourteen, about six percent of all transactions were online. But then, as you look at towards the end of the graph, we're approaching about sixteen percent of all transactions. So again, when you think about how does that impact land use? Well, stores tend to have smaller footprints or don't open as many stores because they're doing more business online. And I saved what I would call maybe the most impactful for last, and that's remote work. This has been huge. So there's a, what's called a survey of working arrangements and attitudes that's been tracking remote works since the pandemic. And so pre-pandemic, roughly about six, seven percent of all workdays were done remotely. So this isn't, this isn't saying six or seven percent of workers were exclusively remote. It's saying of, of every day worked, about six or seven percent was, was done remotely. Of course, that surged during the pandemic, but more recently, we're hovering in the high twenties, okay? So consider just the impact on the office market. Going from about six percent of workdays or, yeah, being remote to twenty eight percent. And I saw an article the other day in the Wall Street Journal that office vacancy has reached its highest point since, I think, the late seventies. So and, and I, and there's more bloodletting to be done yet. And so this is very substantial in terms of the impact on just the office market. So just going back to the beginning, we're going to see continued growth pressure, both for employment and population. Our demographics are changing in that we're seeing fewer households with kids and more households with seniors. On the housing construction side, we're seeing a lot more interest in attached product over detached product. Pricing, well, you all know about pricing. It's, in summary, it's crazy. E-commerce, I think the trend continues to go up. We did see a surge during the pandemic, but now it's kind of continued that steady climb. And then finally, with remote work, I, I think that's going to be, and, and all indications are that's going to continue to be an impact for land use in terms of office space demand. So with that, I'll shift to our Redwood Road conversation. And hopefully, we can keep those types of trends in mind as we start, as we look to some of these other these other, these areas in the city we're going to be discussing. All right, so, so a quick refresher before we look at specific properties. So when we had the consultant look at different areas of the city, they first of all identified areas that they thought would be likely to redevelop. So the areas highlighted in green are those that are shorter term redevelopment potential, okay? And then the ones in yellow were more of the, a little bit out in the future. So green being in the next five years, yellow being six to ten years. And then those different pie charts within that showed the different land use options. So option A on the left, option B on the right. And again, generally speaking, the option A was, had more commercial and less residential, and B being more residential, less commercial. All right, so in looking at the specifics for Redwood Road. So starting on the south side, this is a property, it's about two acres. And just north of the Smith Shopping Center there on the east side of the road. Now, this one's a little bit, I think, maybe even easier than some of the other ones in that. One thing that's changed since the consultant worked on this is there's, there's been a conditional use application on that, that kind of long skinny piece on the north for commercial. So we already have an application that's been through the planning commission for commercial. And so at this point, I think considering residential on that, where one of the pieces is already res or commercial, probably makes the most sense for commercial. But any thoughts on this particular piece? And so the, so the, the consultant considered both commercial and residential as an option in this area.
So you're saying commercial on the entire piece would work?
So that's what the, that was one option. And one point of information the consultant didn't have is that after they had submitted their information, the planning commission actually received an application for commercial use on that north partial. And that's already, that's been approved.
So I didn't see the line. There is two different pieces there. So is the other one totally landlocked or they can do a cross accent?
So it's, that piece is actually part of Smith's property, so they own that.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. You know, I, I think I personally, I think the Smith store idea, it'll be a little bit bigger because across the street, see where they are. Apartments for thirty five units, is that right? Four hundred thirty five units in that.
Just on the west side, just over four hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't, the maintenance right there, I don't know, but that, my opinion, yeah.
So tell at least the commercial being the preference on this one, okay? And again, today, today, of course, we're not voting on anything, but looking for a general direction as we work to update the, the city's general plan map. And it was requested we include some pictures, so I've included some pictures here as well. So the, the one on the left is looking to the east, where you can see some of the apartments in the distance. And then the one on the right, you can see the Smith's Shopping Center to the south there. So next, moving north, you have just under nine acres. And so the consultant here considered a mix of commercial and townhomes or commercial and higher density uses. And again, here you have auto sales on the south part of the parcel currently with an auto body shop to the north with an associated office. Just some of the pictures here, so the, the building on the left is the north building. The one on the right is the building to the, to the south. And we did, just by way of the information from the council, we did show the planning commission these same slides and got their feedback. There, it was kind of mixed. You had some that preferred actually all commercial, which is not an option on this one. Or some had option B. So just by way of background, so thoughts on this, this area?
Just that one, well, I mean, all of these, but that one and the one across the street. I've got a friend who lives close to the Shadowbrook Apartments and has concerns with more apartments in that area. So I think both of those would be more in favor of less residential. And if it was residential, more townhome type stuff than higher density. It couldn't be, except I think it would be where I would be like, where I would like to be.
So can we change our ordinances that townhomes have to be owner occupied, except maybe ten percent could be rentals? And not have the developers come in that are just building townhomes for rent only? So that we can encourage homeownership with our community?
I'm, I'm not of aware, aware of a way to do that. And, and the challenge is just, again, with single-family homes is that a, a townhome development can be platted and sold as, as individual units. But then, just as a homeowner, you know, if I, if I buy a home and I can, I can turn around and, and keep it as an investment and, and rent it out. I just, I don't know of a way that we can, we can prevent someone from renting townhomes once they're, once they're sold.
Yeah, I've been to other communities that they have a ten percent cap on rentals, even short-stay or any other kind of rental in their units. So I might have to look and see what they've done to be able to do it. I know that the state is looking at putting deed restrictions on the modern income or affordable housing. So I didn't know if we could do something like that that set them apart, but.
So I know, I know there are instances where in CCNRs, which the city wouldn't enforce, there are restrictions on how many rentals can, there, there can be. And I have heard also the state's considering deed restrictions. I think in that situation, it's, it's a, it's kind of a trade-off where it's, it's like, if, if you are willing to to commit to having this be owner occupied and have a deed restriction that someone would have to enforce, then you can get additional density or something like that. So it's, it's seen as sort of a, an incentive, if you will. But we can look into that more, but just as we've, as we've explored it in the past, just, we haven't found a way to just blanket, say, you, you know, this area can only be for sale.
Yeah, I think I have to agree with Scott. Eighty, eighty townhomes looks a lot better than four hundred apartments or condos.
Other, other thoughts on this one before we move on?
If we had townhomes, there would be at least some ownership opportunity versus apartments.
Well, there's now a couple townhome communities that the developer, it's only for rent. There is no opportunity to purchase. It's the new trend in investment, building.
Or even some communities, not so far in West Valley, but that are single-family detached, purpose-built rentals as well.
Yeah, they're big in Arizona, often.
Not sure about Arizona, I've just, I've just heard just nationally, there have been examples of that.
Yeah, option A very attractive to me.
So the next one is the, you have just across the street. So it's, you've got kind of apartments surrounding on three sides. So this is a, a mix of, you've got a, a used car business on the north, Lambert Floral, and then you have a, a pawn shop there on the, kind of the southeast corner. So just over ten acres. Again, the consultant looking at a mix of commercial and townhomes or commercial. And in this case, it's, it's a little bit more commercial with fewer townhomes. So this one's a little bit different than some of the other options.
So I want to clarify one thing.
Sure.
None of these property, well, the one, but most of these properties like this one, there's not looking for a change right now. We're just projecting the future, what we would like to encourage.
That's exactly, that's exactly right. So in, in the general plan, in our general plan map, it's, it's what would the city like to see over the next twenty years?
Okay.
And so we would take this information and update our map. And so when, when a developer or a landowner come in to the city and say, hey, what can I do here? We say, well, the zoning's this, but the city's thinking down the road, it could be this.
Just making sure everybody understood.
Oh, thank you. That's a great.
Right now.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, this is really just looking for your feedback so we can update the, that general plan map.
So though when developers come, part of their application is a, is a change to the general plan.
Correct. And, and really, the, the, one of the big reasons why we're doing the general plan update is the older that map gets, the, the more, more changes we see because it's, it's not reflecting sort of current conditions.
So, yeah, I think I like the, I just, Redwood Road is self-populated with apartments and such, adding more traffic. I don't see being two ways, but.
Often, commercial brings more. Often, commercial brings more traffic than residential, though. Depending on the commercial, I guess.
Maybe, maybe if we got one chief here, but. Oh, she, I just, I just wonder, in that area, do we see a lot of fire and police calls? And is it commercial versus residential? I would guess more residential than commercial. That, that maybe that's part of our discussion of how do we mitigate some of that by our general plan?
So great, great question. In fact, the planning commission was tracking on the same question. So we, we actually put together, we haven't shared this with the planning commission yet, we'll, we'll share this with the council as well if you would like, would be. We took all the, so not fire calls, we looked at all the police calls for twenty twenty-two and, and since you mapped those. And, and looked at, okay, if you compare, say, townhomes versus single family homes versus apartments on a per unit basis, how do those stack up on average? And it's pretty interesting stuff. And, and one of the things, and again, one spoil alert is there's a, there's a pretty dramatic range in apartment complexes, depending on the complex, right? So not all complexes are created equal, in other words. And so, and even in some cases, the older ones actually have fewer calls than newer ones, right? So it's not, it's, it's not what you think always. You, you may think the older ones are the problems. In some cases, you've had some newer ones that have been a problem. But if that's, that's helpful, we can, in our next presentation, we can share that information. Because I do think it's, it's pretty telling. I mean, just one other anecdote or note there is that we found that with a single family homes that are owned versus rented and rented home has double the call volume than a, a owned home on average, so.
Just the one particular case, it's on Redwood Road, towards the end of forty-one or so. They, it, it was called Redwood something apartment.
Yes.
Few years ago, and I think they had a bad management, that we ran into a problem with the, of less apartments here. But recently, they've done very well, but they changed their ownership and new management there and no less called than, than it used to be.
That, that, from what we're seeing in the data, the, the largest single indicator is, is the management, how well it's managed. But yes, so great point. Yes, we can provide, at least on the police side, we have David, you can share on that. Yes, sir.
One thought I had is on, thinking about whether residential or commercial is current or, or future planned, green space, parks, whatnot, because sometimes it may not make sense to put commercials where there's already existing green space and parks. And, and I, looking at the first slide, I don't, I can't tell what, what is a part of a EUD open space and versus public space, but that would be helpful to understand where those are located in this area or which areas that we look at, just green spaces.
So just, so in the kind of the immediate vicinity. Any other thoughts on, on this one before we move north?
Yeah, option B good.
All right, just again, a picture, so of course you're, I think you're all familiar with Lambert Floral. And then the one on the right, there's the, the pawn shop that's there on the south end. All right, this one's a little bit unique in that it has some limited frontage. You've got on the north end, you have a used car lot that's right on Redwood. And then the, the piece is more, that's, the, the front on thirty-eight sixty south is a trust manufacturer, building supply location. And, you know, when you look at just kind of what's in the immediate vicinity, along, at least along thirty-eight sixty south, you have a relatively new townhome project on the south side of the road, and then towards the east end, you've got some townhomes and condos there. And then in terms of the options, again, the consultant looked at commercial, which would be along the frontage on Redwood Road. And then again, because of the, the limp lack of visibility, I think for that, the, the property that's more towards the east end, having that be residential. So again, townhomes, which, which would align with what was done more recently in the south side of thirty-eight sixty or a mix of some townhomes and apartments or condos for option B. So thoughts on this one?
This, this one kind of weird shape, also, it's kind of like in a very unique location. So, so I, I think option B to be better because the more townhomes in the east side and the west side, just northwest of this map, maybe a little bit commercial there.
So the difference between option A and B is that B allows for apartments, condos. More of a high-rise, high-density space, whereas option A would have actually more townhomes than option B, but it wouldn't have apartments or condos.
Right. So same amount of commercial either scenario, just how much, how much density is there between those two?
And I think a townhome off the beaten path would kind of be attractive to people, so I would probably go with A. Just more townhomes than apartments.
I agree, especially with the surrounding apartments, buildings. The new one on forty-one right there.
Other, other comments on that one?
So the, the northeast lot. Where, where does it have access?
So it's owned by the same group that owns this partial, so it's from thirty-eight sixty. This is all part of the same business. It goes to partials.
Used to be BMC, I think was there. See, is a trust manufacturer, bumper supplies.
Is it not there anymore?
It's still there, but I think it's just owned by a different.
Oh, a different person. Yeah, because it looks like they use thirty-eight sixty for their, I don't know.
So just again, the, here's the building supply building here, a couple pictures. Then the, the used car lot that's on Redwood.
So that picture was from thirty-eight sixty, not from Redwood.
These two are from thirty-eight sixty. This one's from Redwood, the used car lot.
I was trying to figure out how they could both be on Redwood.
Well, that was a little bit tricky. All right, so the one you were always, you've all been waiting for.
Picture?
Yes.
Do we have guidelines for if we want parking, a new development came in here, it's commercial parking in the front or the building in the front and parking in the back? Do we, we guide that at all, or is it?
We, so we allow both. We don't actually require the building be out front. Now, the one exception here in Fairborn, we do have regulations that say the building has to be out by the street, but along Redwood, we do not. So it could be either, they could build it, you know, out by the landscaping or have it be behind parking.
What's the thought process on Fairborn where it's fairly fair, it's out front? Is it eye, parking to be more visible of the stores that are there? What?
For more, more of an urban environment. So if you, you know, think about, you know, downtown Salt Lake, other areas where it's it, buildings are easily accessible for pedestrians, whereas Redwood's more kind of car car focused, and so you have, pretty common to have parking out in front. But, but generally, as you get into more dense urban areas, buildings tend to be closer to the street and, and the cars are kind of pushed, pushed behind.
Thank you.
I bet. So this, next one, a, a large one here. This is the, of course, the Redwood Drive-In. And the largest of the sites, at least along the south portion of Redwood Road. So this is one of those that we think is in the, likely in the shorter terms, and frankly, it's mainly because the the amount of improvements on the property versus the land is relatively low. And so that's, that was one of the indicators is if, if you have a property where there's not much on it, it's more likely that someone could pick that up and, and develop it.
Hasn't there been a couple of applications in the last ten years already?
We did have one application that, that was submitted, was started its way through the planning commission, but then the applicant ended pulling, pulling their application. And, and we've had people call about it, so we, there's definitely been interest over the years. So this one's a little bit unique in that when you look at the, the image on the left, so just kind of the, the further zoomed out, you actually have, you know, an elementary school and a single family neighborhood on the west end. And you've got apartments on the south, some condos on the north, and then, you know, on the east side, you've got a little home park, used car lot, so it's, it's kind of a, a mixed bag in its surroundings. And so that's why in option A, you had a commercial, and that would be along the frontage of Redwood. But then they had some smaller lot, single family that would be along the west side of the property. And then sort of townhomes in the middle. So the idea is you, you kind of have this tiered or layered approach, if you will, to this property. And then the, the option B would be, again, commercial along the frontage, just not as much with kind of a higher density option for option B.
And is the thought that thirty small lots would feed out onto nineteen fifty?
That's right.
Not be it's, would you have the townhomes do that or go out to Redwood Road?
So, and, and that, that part, I don't know, they, they didn't get into like the level of site planning, but generally, the idea would be, since you have the elementary school and the single family on the west side, you'd have those homes on, and then the townhomes would be kind of in the middle of the, of the site.
I like option A.
Yeah. It makes sense without, single family home has been across the street to the west.
Probably the largest parcel in.
Along Redwood, for sure.
Sure on Redwood, probably within five, five miles of here, that's prime real estate. So it's, it's about half the size of the Valley Fair parcel, I mean, it's quite.
It's a big piece. So here's just some images. This is the used car lot that's there on the corner of thirty-eight hundred and Redwood. And of course, the, the image on the right is from Redwood. And then you can see from the, the other streets of, on the right is thirty-eight hundred, and then on the left is nineteen fifty west. So it's, not so, it's got three, three sizes, three street frontage sides. All right, so this next one is relatively small. And I should point out, the, the planning commission, I need to remember, they're, they actually agree, they also said option A on the last one as well. So in this particular one, the planning commission recommended option A. This is an acre and a half. And, and really, the, the challenge the planning commission saw with this one, and another one we'll look at further north, is on some of these smaller pieces, they felt are trying to do residential on a piece this small, they just didn't think was a great option. So this actually, for those that remember, this used to be the carpet barn site, the building burned down, I believe, and so the suggestion they made, and I think makes sense, was a commercial here, but thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I think the commercial is the best option.
Yeah.
Just a couple more here. So yeah, that picture here, not much to see, it's vacant, so. So this is a, a, it's a two-story building, but it's currently being used, the property's being used as a used car lot. And here's just a picture, so you can see the building there and just a little bit right of center. So here again, planning commission looking at this is like, you know, this is, it's a fairly small site, trying to do residential on this would be they thought would not be a great fit. So that was their suggestion, was option A on this one as well. Right. And so last one, thanks for hang, hanging with me here. So this is parish furniture, so you have the, that, that's really the main user here, and then you have the, the restaurant.
Oggies out of it?
Oh, they're, they're there too. Yeah, Oggies on the north, if you're looking for a, a good breakfast, and then the, there's a hair salon, and then of course, there's a a separate building that's a, a restaurant there on the hard corner. So only, this is actually, compared to some of the other sites, again, smaller, five acres. And again, with planning commission, again, it was split on this one, some thought maybe just sort of repositioning as commercial. Others lean towards option A, which is commercial with some apartments and condos, but not as much as what was recommended in option B. And really, just maybe another thing to clarify from the consultant's perspective is when you get to properties like this one, where there's more building on it, if, if there's interest in redevelopment, it's, it's harder to do that with a townhome type product because the land, there's more value in the building, versus say like a, the drive-in theater, there's very little by way of building value, right? So, in other words, the more building there is, the more likely you would have to do density if you wanted to see redevelop.
So would it make sense to kind of link it into the property to the east, the old Chris and Dix?
The, that's one thing we could look at, that the diff, the main difference here is that the, the shop, the center to the east was done in the, the early two thousands. This building is very old, and so it's, it's more of an age consideration. I think it's, it's more prominent in terms of the age than the center to the east.
But to your point, Mayor, what would we want the whole area to look like?
Yeah.
Twenty years from now, that's kind of, the whole process is thinking twenty years out. When, when that grocery store, I think it's a grocery store right there.
It's a grocery store now.
When, when that is aged, you know? So I think commercials probably might be on the corner of Thirty-Fifth and Redwood, I think.
That for me, it'd be just commercial only. There's not, neither A or B.
Maybe tear us one down, build a new, you know? Commercial center, something. But I'm thinking it's the option A, option B, the feed into that area, right at one.
Hey, that was the, that's the last slide, so just, so I made some notes here, but a couple of things I'll follow up on, so as the question about being able to restrict rental housing, right, being, having townhomes that are just for sale, providing some of the police data, in terms of dif, for different, or calls for different types of housing, for example. And then also nearby park space, so.
Yeah, that's helpful. Okay, any more information that you would like to see from Steve? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Mr. Flores, you're up.
Yes, so last week, I let you know we were tentatively planning for the sixteenth. That's going to be moved to the twenty-third. And so Scott from Appian, who you all met, he said he could present on the sixteenth, however, it'd be over Zoom, he'd rather be in person, and I told him I'd rather him be in person as well, so we're moving that to the twenty-third. And I will let you know, he plans to give a full presentation, deep dive into everything. So he said to plan on probably an hour and a half. And to protect the names of the candidates that have applied, we will do that in a closed session.
Okay.
So that is the, we're, we're planning on that being the only agenda item for the twenty-third. Unless something comes up that's pressing that we do need to take care. Unless something comes up that's pressing that we do need to take care of, we'll throw it in there. But for now, it looks like that'll be the only agenda item.
Okay, it looks like that's fine and dandy.
It looks like we haven't done over any items for next week's regular meetings. Is that we won't have a regular meeting next week?
Oh, correct, yeah.
No, we need no regular. We'll have study, but no regular. Thanks. Council calendar, any questions or concerns?
Yeah, if I can just say, we canceled the chat with the chief tomorrow due to the weather, so that won't be happening. They're just postponing that. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
My only calendar concern is being me, but I signed on for a weekly meeting of the city council. We haven't been having weekly meetings of the city council for the last three months.
Okay.
You know, we haven't had items to discuss or whatever, but we haven't constituency doesn't know when our meetings are because we cancel them week to week.
Right. But you do noted on the website which ones are canceled so that it's easy to see.
It's easy to see, but one hundred and thirty six thousand people looking at that website, I don't think we have that big following.
Well, and on Facebook, we do post tomorrow. They put it on the Facebook.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday instead of so that Nicole knows what's if there's going to be a meeting and which ones. And they're posting that earlier than they used to so that it comes up on people's feed. So you know it's either been canceled.
But but people who want to come and speak to us, I I suspect that most of them aren't going to notice that on Facebook.
Possibly.
I'm just saying that, you know, we we need to make a she has to put it in a year ahead. We need to make a calendar and as a city, stick to it.
So would you suggest having regular meetings and just open and close them or open them, have public comment and then close them? If we don't have business, because I know building has slowed down because of interest rates and such. And so we don't have much control. And the other thing is we could just change our schedule to only do two. Do our meetings on the second and fourth week of the month and have a higher possibility of having those consistently.
It's hard to know. I mean, this is just a three month trend, right? What if it's been concerning to me?
Yeah.
In that three months, what if what if one or two council members on a rotating basis stay for a to if anyone came to the regular meeting, they could just meet with them more individually. And and I I've found that that residents who need with us in that situation are able to share more and receive more information.
Well, and with the meeting with us, we still have to go to staff. So maybe the best thing would have be is maybe have staff stick around or a council member and a staff member so that staff can actually tell them what can or can't be done.
Probably doesn't need to be all the staff.
No, but maybe rotate through them and let them just
Yeah.
figure that out. I mean, and if it was at six thirty, yeah, one person would stay a little longer, but.
Right.
So we would still cancel the meeting, but just have someone available to if anyone came in, okay?
If any residents showed up that they could talk to.
Right.
Is an interesting question because I do think that there are many instances where folks could address concerns via email or a text message or catching us in the parking lot.
Right.
But they want to come to a meeting because it's on the record, on the formal record that their concern was raised. So.
And all seven hear it.
Correct. But that it's at least on the record officially. So I wonder, that's a consideration.
So as staff, do you foresee having not too much on the agendas that maybe for a few months, just doing the second and fourth or first and third?
So that it's it's really hard to know what's what's kind of coming through. We could try that if if that's the council's preference and then see how it goes or.
Yeah, because I mean, there might be if we do it every other, one that's really light and one that's really heavy, we'll just be here a little longer that night, but at least people have the agenda. I mean, the schedule they know and I don't know, that's how.
Or possible compromise in that maybe the public comment period is a standing every first four Tuesdays. Whether or not there's any additional business items, then we could just adjourn. And maybe no one shows up to that.
Right.
Just adjourn after thirty seconds and but there's still that opportunity. It doesn't seem like closing off access from the community should they want to say something on the record. Just another alternative. And to add that maybe there's three instead of fours, first three that we have regular meetings and and we always stay regardless of web business or not. That's just a combination of different options.
I don't know. I've just talked to a lot of people that they only have their meetings twice a month. I'm thinking, how do you do that? But it was consolidated. So do you want to take a week to think on it? Do you want to make a decision tonight?
Would take two weeks to think.
Well, we're here next week. Should have studied.
I just, you know, now in my fourth term, so I've been on the council for twelve years. And fourteen, if you count the two year hiatus between a couple of terms. But canceling a meeting was a rare.
Oh, yeah.
Few and far between type of thing, not every other week we cancel a meeting because we don't have anything. I I don't think we're that fully developed that we don't have anything going on.
I think it's interest rates and we are we're only like three percent of property left instead of thirty and fifty like we had before. So I think we're just getting to be a mature city and we may not have as much development.
And and we may need to do what's other mature cities have done and go to twice a month or something.
And some of them aren't that mature, the cities that are doing it. That's just how they're doing it. So longer meetings. I mean, last week it was what fifteen, twenty minutes?
That might be a good way to go because even now if we had, we're gonna have oh, not tonight. A lot of times we have an hour.
Right.
It'd be nice to have Steve talk too much, I guess.
I think we asked too many questions. I'll take full credit for that one.
What I'm here to, I'm here like twelve years. I don't see anything wrong with the scene every week. Uh, meeting except for last last year, we got a up and on. I know that kind of a little bit, but I think I don't think every year we have that problem. No, to be honest with you. Been at the same time with you twenty years, but totally last year, it was very much exceptional. I don't think it's every year you can have the same problem.
So take a week and think of it. We'll bring it up. We'll put it on next week for communication.
Yeah.
I think I'd like to talk to our staff too on how how this will affect us. Yeah. I know there's times where you know, we have something come up and if we can get it on the agenda right away and get it approved as soon as possible, that's helpful. So I think it would be good for us to discuss and we can bring you back our thoughts on it as well.
Yep, I think that's great. Yeah, let's just have it for a discussion item next week then. Any other concerns on the calendar? Okay. Potential future agenda items.
A couple of them.
Okay.
The first one is, I think, last I asked Nick Colwell, former government, strong mayor, weak mayor. To be honest with you, I sat down multiple people, including mayor and former council member and I ran it, I had, and I ran it to Wayne last Wednesday to the city gym here. We had a very good conversation, very frank, very, very honest. And we led it to uh, the discussion about strong man, weak man. So I can hold that one up for right now before I put my heart and my mind into this thing set, but people seem like we do it right now is very good, very good way we're we're doing right now. I think it's a good thing is so I just I want to get that information, Nico, to let you know that. Again, hold it off for me. The second thing is maybe this one already done, but maybe
I need to fill out her first name, so I'm not gonna flush. Oh, weather, okay. Anyway, continue on.
Okay, thank you. The city owners is that relating with the city manager opposed. We're gonna have a new city manager here. So I want to see that, Kali. We talked last night. I think maybe this one for Eric Wonderson. Yeah. The the state law and also the city ordinances relate to the city manager. I want to take a look at that. Maybe you guys already sent it out before, but you know, holidays and campaign and stuff, so I didn't have a chance to look at it. So maybe just please resend those again, and want to take a look at those. Yeah.
We, yeah, we can definitely do that. Sorry, what is it exactly that you want?
Uh, bold then.
The city manager duties and responsibilities.
Okay.
State, state code, and then I think it's our legislative code too.
Yeah.
And separate them.
And and go back to Eric Wonderson right here. We can change the RCD code or city owners. We can do that, correct?
Correct.
They love cannot, okay? That's all I need. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Yes.
The gentleman that came last week, I don't recall the name, but the issue with supplements, this is another question for Eric. It sounded like to me that that's state or federal issue. Is there anything that as a city we should think about when it comes to selling supplements that some may consider dangerous or that should have controls over them?
Yeah, I mean, the a lot of that's going to be controlled by the state criminal code and and if it is illegal, our police can obviously enforce it. If there's something new that, like the one he was talking about, it took me a second to remember. We have past ordinances in the past to try to cover that. The problem with a lot of those synthetic drugs, like when spice was popular is it was hard to chase because you would you would prohibit a a certain chemical combination. And then they would change that and start selling the new chemical combination and and so so, yeah, we we have the ability to do that if it becomes a problem. And but it's it's just know that we sort of have to chase it a little bit. And the state and the state does much better job of that because they have the resources, you know, to identify those drugs and be able to to ban them. But we'll we'll keep looking at that and take a look about our work with the police.
Okay. Seeing others, we received an email from a gentleman that would like us to find the Hero's Olympic Cauldron and bring it to West Valley and have it here for until the Olympics and through the Olympics. It has been found. Andy over at the Maverick Center has located it, talked to the Olympic Committee. It will be, my question tonight is would you like to have it over at the Maverick Center or somewhere in the city? And if so, it'll take some money. So Andy would have to figure out what that would be and bring it back to us and see if we want to spend the money to get it located here, get it from where it's at.
Maverick Center was our site. I thought we had something left from the Olympics still on the Maverick Center parking lot.
No idea. And I do not know how big this cauldron is. It may only be three to six feet and it'd be better inside of a building than outside. I don't know. But it's just.
I thought there was something outside commemorated the Olympics.
Well, we've got the two guys playing hockey, that statue.
This was.
Yeah, there there is that metal thing.
Metal thing that's out there.
Shaped like a cauldron up above you.
I think if I'm not mistaken, the one you're talking about though is no one else is claiming it, right? It's in the storage somewhere else.
It's it's storage. Nobody has got it located on their property. So I think it would personally, I think it'd be worthwhile to have Andy just look into it and see what it would take.
What it would cost.
What it would cost to get it here. Mainly, I don't know if we have to rent it or what, but it would be just getting it here. The gentleman offered to go get it in his truck and trailer, but they will not allow that. So it would have to be securely brought out and installed. So it's that cost.
I would say that's why Andy looked into it.
It is.
Yeah.
And then where we, some ideas of where we would place it.
Yeah, depending on the size, that's a big. Okay, so we'll have Andy then move forward with investigating the situation. Okay, we just didn't want to have him do all that. And then everybody's like, why wouldn't we want that? Yeah, but this gentleman has done a lot of research, so he's been sharing with Jake and I.
Oh, did you have more? Sorry.
Nope, that's it.
Just request for communication. Seems like it's been a while since we talked or were updated about Bangater roller coaster situation. Would be, I know that we sent our sternly worded letter and there are other efforts, you know, happening, but I don't know that we had any follow up with that.
Okay, so if we get a presentation? Okay, that sounds reasonable. Any objection to that?
Since everybody's asking us, and one's gonna have.
Yep, and how, yeah, lots of questions. Okay, if there's no objection to that, then we'll ask for that to be scheduled. Any council reports?
I met with the Health U S Valley today. They're planning a monthly Wellness Wednesday for West Valley. First one will be on the twenty first of February. And it'll totally be online. So they asked, you know, some of the dispensary committees, well, how are we going to advertise it? And what was their answer? Online. On our website, other sites and that. But this first one will be about mental health. They'll have four or five presenters. It'll present fifteen minutes each or something like that. And just bring it up so we know it's coming.
And then when it's activated, can we get some kind of an information packet that tells us when and where and?
Yeah, well, it'll be online, so it'll be.
Well, that's what I mean, how to log in, where to log into.
And they didn't have that yet either.
Okay. Are they looking closer to March for starting it?
February twenty first.
February twenty first.
That's closer to March. But, you know, sound like a great activity. I kind of would have liked to see him tie up with Hump Day buffet, but you know, you gotta do what we can do.
Well, yeah, but they could have outdoor activities, walking around the block or something, so.
Chicken trick.
Any other council reports?
Actually, yeah. I have, can I, I missed one. It's from a future agenda. It's a beautiful, just.
Best need to keep up, yep.
That's all. I ran into the guy named as, I think he know you, Scott. Yes, it's good, good things though. He want, he wants to actually, is he in my hotel here and then if you want to do a reading, I mean, rodeo and he can volunteer to do that. He very. Volunteed to do that. He's very professional, the uh uh wind potion. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Would get uh.
Okay, so he travel around in Utah. Even, you know, rodeo everywhere and he said, well, one of you guys doing that, I'll I'll stand up, do something with you guys. So what do you think about that?
Did we ever have the rodeo come to the Maverick Center?
We did.
Yes, days are forty seven.
Forty seven, she used to be here.
At the Maverick Center.
Been in Maverick Center.
It's good.
Yeah, so it's possible.
And Alan was there too.
Got a couple of people in our neighborhood are. Like. Horses.
So do you want staff to reach out and see what that would take? Or have this gentleman reach out to the Maverick Center and?
Uh. I don't, I'm just. Wondering how it works. How does the Maverick Center figure out? What?
What events they have?
That's where gonna be there and. They're probably the best to. Bring you something. I don't know. Do they bring us anything? We never had any from the Maverick Center.
We've had reports from them.
Yeah, that's since I've been here, so I don't know.
Yeah, we've had them in the past, so. We could ask if they want to reach out to this gentleman and see what the possibilities could be.
Would want to compete. With the days of forty seven.
Well, you'd have to time it so that you could actually get a crowd to come.
Yeah.
Uh we try to do anything here in our city.
Yeah. Wish we could get the days forty seven back there.
Yeah, I mean.
Their own stadium now.
Yeah. Built their own.
Yep.
Okay.
I can take that, find out if that. Bits and the timing and look into it. So, yeah, I can give you his information.
I was gonna save something else.
Okay.
So you and I talked about a while ago, but I was gonna save for strategic plan, but um. The Christmas market. We went to, this is the place at the Christmas market. They only hold it, I think, two weekends. And it was so packed. That it was almost miserable, actually. But but I was talking to some some neighbors that I saw there, we actually ran into them and they said, we need to have one of these in West Valley. And I said. You're right, probably.
We have that.
Well, I think it'd be great.
Down at the cultural center, they've been on Christmas market for the last four or five years.
They're gonna do it this year?
Uh huh. It was only, like you say, I think it was only one weekend.
Didn't know about it.
I mean, we had something at the fitness center. Uh Christmas party.
At the same time, so I think they find those too. The cultural center.
But that's a compelling idea. I mean, we go every year to Aug into the Christmas village up there.
Oh, we definitely have the space for Christmas Village. At the cultural center, so you could do a market on a Christmas village, but. Yeah, give Park something to think about. Okay, I'm sure they're bored.
I can see the wheel.
Totally bored.
Waiting for us.
Yep.
Christmas preview.
All right, Eric, can you do it in three minutes?
So. I could, if you want to.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, so um we do have need for a. Close session just for orderly routine litigation, pending litigation.
So.
Okay.
That's what we know. During that, like, during the ranch.
Correct.
It would be, it would be adjourned.
No.